Coming for this second public hearing. This is for our five-year, 2025 through 2029 consolidated plan that we're looking to put together. And we appreciate you being here and we look forward to your comments later. At this point, I'll turn it over to Bill, I think, right?
Yep. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And just by way of introduction, Bill Wazuleski with Mullen and Lauter-Gan Associates. And we're the consultant that helped the city prepare the five-year consolidated plan. So just a little bit of an overview on the process for today. So I'm going to run through a quick PowerPoint here just to kind of tee us up and tell us the planning that's been done to date. Then I'm going to turn it over to Deb and Dave for some discussion on the annual action plan, priorities and funding allocations. Then I'll wrap it up with some next steps and then we'll open up for public comment. So we appreciate you all coming out today and look forward to hearing comments on the planning process and the plan itself. So again, as we said, this plan, the five-year HUD consolidated plan is required to be prepared and updated every five years by HUD as a result of the city's entitlement status under the Community Development Block Grant Program, the HOME program and the ESG program. And when we prepare our consolidated plan, we do a number of things. We're required to do an updated housing market analysis, which we do, which we did. We're also required to do a Housing and Homeless Needs Assessment, which we did. These are primarily demographic and census-driven analysis. It's not a full-blown housing market analysis, but it's, just provides a snapshot of the current status of the housing market in the city as well as the Housing and Homeless Needs Assessment in the city. We also supplement that with a series of stakeholder meetings. And we carried out a number of stakeholder meetings in January. I think we did five or six stakeholder sessions. We also had previous public needs meetings in January and early February to elicit comments from this general public in addition to stakeholders, with the idea being that we're looking to supplement those housing and market needs assessment and the Housing and Homeless Needs Assessment with comments and real-time information from practitioners in the area of their expertise under housing homelessness and community development. It's really important that we got all that input because it helped drive probably the most important aspect of the consolidated plan, which is the strategic plan. And that's the other element of the five-year consolidated plan. And the strategic plan is really important and it matters because all that information on needs led us to help the city develop its priorities, its high priority needs for housing and community development and homelessness over the next five years. And that's really important because in order for the city to use its federal resources to fund activities to address those needs with CDBG HOME and ESG funds, it has to be a high priority need. So the draft plan that we prepared and is on display right now for comment incorporates all that input and the city's input on its high priority needs for the next five years. Finally, we prepared an annual action plan for 2025. And the annual action plan really is the document that lays out how the city will utilize its federal resources in fiscal year 2025 to address those high priority needs. And we'll talk a little bit about that in more detail as we proceed here. Just to kind of provide some more detail on the consultations that we've done to date, as I said, we were here in the city for a couple of days in late January and early February. We also did some follow-up virtual meetings with stakeholders. And we met with organizations, again stakeholder organizations, that included the Housing Authority, the Redevelopment Authority, members of the Continuum of Care, and that's for homeless providers, are members of the Continuum of Care. A lot of various service providers within the community that provide wraparound services to persons who are homeless. We talked to affordable housing providers and advocates. We talked with, again, the Small Business Development Center, various neighborhood groups. We also conducted an online survey for general public who couldn't make it to the public needs meetings. They were an online survey that also asked for people to provide input on needs within the community. Again, all this information led to us helping to develop the strategic plan. I didn't want to, I do want to really emphasize, we also did a survey, a very targeted survey to what we call persons with lived experience. And this went through the various shelters of the city and asked people who are currently homeless or who were homeless their input on needs. And again, that was really important that we got that input. It's pretty unique that we're able to get that kind of input and when we develop these plans. So we actually did receive a good number of responses to that and we incorporated that into the plan as well. And then finally, we had two public needs meetings, as I said previously, to elicit general public input on the plan prior to developing it. Just to kind of provide an overview of the data and the input that we received from the stakeholders during the planning process. So we were able to obtain a copy of the 2024 Point-in-Time Survey, which identified 378 homeless individuals in various emergency shelters and 76 unsheltered individuals. We had 30% of the households in Erie experiencing cost burden and paying more than 30% of their income towards housing costs. These were all increased over the last five-year period that we did, when we did the plan last five years ago. There's, we also looked at the inventory of affordable accessible units in the city and they were found to be very insufficient. The gap of affordable housing available in the city is growing and continues to grow over the last five years. Length of stay in emergency shelters is increasing and the persons with lived experience survey identified shelter capacity as a need. There's, the shelters are at their capacity and the wait times to get into shelters are increasing every year. We also had a, we also identified barriers to obtaining affordable housing, which included a lack of inventory, a person's criminal history being a barrier to getting into housing and a poor rental history, as being barriers to getting into and obtaining affordable housing. Financial resources for rental application fees, security and utility deposits were also arrears in payments. Subpopulations with persons, with increased needs for the elderly, youth and chronically homeless and large families were also identified as needs that were increasing. Just to kind of provide an overview of the survey results, there were a total of 228 persons who responded to our online survey. Of the, of the 149 responses to the question asking them to prioritize a list of housing activities, housing for families with children was the highest ranked item. There was 151 responses to the question asking persons to rank a list of economic development initiatives. Job creation and retention was a top priority, followed by workforce development and employment programs. There were 150 responses to the question asking persons to rank the list of special needs and services. Mental health services, early childhood education and healthcare services were the top responses. Of the 148 responses to the question asking them to list public infrastructure initiatives, the highest priority listed were road improvements and/or reconstruction. Affordable housing was most often cited, highest priority, followed by economic and workforce development, including trading and job creation. As I said, the key aspect of the five-year consolidated plan is the development of the strategic plan for the next five years. And again, these are the high, high priority needs identified in the city in which the city has identified and will use its federal resources to address these needs over the next five years with its federal resources. And you can see the top goals include providing homeowner rehabilitation assistance, providing rental rehabilitation assistance, the creation of new affordable rental housing, increasing homeownership, providing homeless housing and services, improving public facilities infrastructure, providing public services, code enforcement, demolition of dilapidated structures, various economic development initiatives and revitalization of the Central Business District, i.e. downtown. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Deb to talk about the annual action plan and Dave.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you all for coming out. The numbers that you see on the screen are actually numbers. We use last year's numbers, but please take note to the CDBG number, which is $2,855,318. This is less than $115,446 that we received last year. For 2015 through 2017, the Department of Economic and Community Development was audited by the Office of Inspector General. There were $115,446 of unsupported costs. So our office actually has to repay those funds back and we have elected to do it in one lump sum. So we are using the $2,855,318 as the proposed amount. That is for CDBG. HOME last year was $764,318 and Emergency Solutions was $267,205. Please take note that we're using these numbers. These are proposed amounts. These numbers may change and so the numbers that are listed in the handout today may also be changed because they are proposed. I'll now turn it over to Dave Dieter, who will actually provide information on the exact projects that we look to fund this year.
Thank you, Deborah. Before I start, just to reiterate what Deborah just said, we have not yet received our official allocation for fiscal year 2025. So these numbers are estimates. For the Community Development Block Grant Program, for the Public Services category, we have estimated expenditure, estimated allocations of $769,789.24. For housing activities, $221,000. For public facilities and improvements, $1,201,964. For special economic development, $114,918. And for general administration, $571,063. For the Home Investment Partnership Program, HOME program, three activities, proposed funding, HANDS Boston Store Rental Rehab, $500,000. The East Side Renaissance Rental Rehab Activity, $200,000. And City Administration, $64,318. I'd also like to note that by HUD requirement, 15% of the HOME allocation must be set aside for Community Housing Development Organization or CHODO activities. So you'll see the asterisk beside HANDS, that that will qualify as a CHODO activity. Moving on to the Emergency Solutions Grant, if you're following along, you'll see that the allocation amounts for fiscal year 2025 and the prior year allocation for fiscal year 2024 are identical. Again, that is because we have not received our official allocation yet, so we just plugged in the same numbers as last year. But please note that the allocation of ESG funds is based on a ratio that includes the daily average number of beds provided per facility to the daily average provided by all facilities multiplied times the amount of ESG funds available for emergency shelter activity. So breakdown on the allocation by category is emergency and transitional shelters typically receive $60,000 of the ESG total. Rapid rehousing typically receives 32.5% of the allocation and the city is allowed to take 7.5% for admin. That concludes my summary. Turn it back to Deborah.
Actually, we'll turn it back over to Bill.
To Bill, I'm sorry.
Yes, and just one last note on the annual allocations. We anticipate HUD to release those in the middle part of May to the end of May, so we should know, the city should know its allocations here very shortly. As I said, those are just estimate amounts, but we anticipate the allocation shortly. So just wanted to kind of provide a little bit of overview of the next steps. So again, as you can see, the five-year consolidated plan and annual action plan went on public display for 30 days, which began on April 11th. And so we're carrying out our second required public meeting today to elicit comments on the draft plans. And the plan will remain on public display through May 11th of this year, May 12th, actually, 30 days total. We anticipate going to City Council for adoption of the consolidated plan and annual action plan on May 21st and then submission to HUD shortly thereafter. Just a side note, we cannot submit these plans until HUD provides direction in terms of the annual allocations that the city will receive, as well as direction on when they can submit those. So again, we anticipate probably submitting the annual action plan sometime in early to mid-June if all goes well, or at a time that HUD allows us to submit the plan to HUD. So we're going to open up for public comment, but I think, Deborah, you wanted to review the ground rules for public comment.
Okay. At this time, if there is anyone who would like to come to the podium and provide us with public comment, we ask that you come forward, that you state your name, your organization and provide the comments at that time. So the floor is open if you'd like to come to the podium.
Well, Mayor, CDBG staff?
My name is Karen Grettler. I'm with the John F. Kennedy Center. And I'm here to urge the city to continue to support after-school programs. In the city, probably as elsewhere, after-school programs are similar in that they're all providing some level of academic assistance, recreation, sports, arts and culture and meals. It seems that the individual programs kind of cut out their niche in their neighborhood and they get good at one or two services. For JFK, ours happens to be 21st Century, I do believe. It's, it's the most quality service that we're offering right now in after-school. And I think that although after schools are similar, they have different programs, different pots of kids, I think they all have one goal, and that's to keep kids safe during out-of-school time. And that's why it takes many forms in the different neighborhoods, but to me, that's most important during out-of-school time, that they're safe in our building. One example I have of that, it's 20, maybe 20 years ago, there was an incident on Buffalo Road at a retail store. I remember it involved a robbery, people were hurt and the teens were JFK kids. And Larry Meredith, at the time, he was our deputy director. And I can't remember why we were closed that evening, but he said, had we been open, that would not have happened because those kids would have been with us. Kind of interesting. I realize that, you know, it takes a village to raise kids, but I like to think that after school makes a difference. And we've got some success stories, as I'm sure all the centers do. One of our little girls, Heavenly Bibbs, is currently in the U.S. Navy, Second Class Petty Officer aboard the USS flagship in Japan. Rashawn Thrower is a Mill Creek Police Officer. And MLK's James Charad is a graduate of JFK's Teen Council. And finally, our board president, Zachariah Sharif, is a JFK kid and he also serves on the Erie School Board. So I thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Dunnehy. I'm the Program Director at Dafmark Dance Theater. Dafmark provides an after-school and summer program called the Dafmark Creative Arts Center that's located at the John E. Haran Garden Apartments, which is a public housing campus located out on the east side. Like she had said, I also believe in after-school and out-of-school time programs. They do keep children safe, but I wanted to speak specifically to our program. We provide a free year-round after-school and summer arts education program for youth ages six through 18. We offer high-quality arts classes in theater, dance, painting, photography, sculpture, digital arts, sorry, poetry and ceramics and more. We employ 30 community-based teaching artists annually. We provide one-on-one academic tutoring in reading and math by certified teachers. Our program serves over 100 youth annually, who, children who live in public housing. And our 21st Century Community Learning Center program serves youth who attend Edison East, RB Wiley, Piper Brulee and the Eagles Nest. Our focus is on low-income, high-need students, particularly those who are struggling academically. We prioritize youth in poverty facing barriers for transportation, cost and lack of access to enrichment programs and limited access to arts education. We provide programming to 60 of the lowest-performing students by receiving, who receive one-on-one tutoring in reading and math through the 21st Century program. What makes our program unique is that it's free and it's an after-school program located within public housing. It's the only one that's like that for an arts program in the whole city. We've eliminated the cost barrier and transportation is one of the biggest barriers for out-of-school time programs. We have a walking school bus that provides walking from Edison, which is the biggest theater school for us, by the Blue Coats. The Blue Coats walk the kids every day from Edison to our program. We offer 47 weeks of programming. That's 947 hours of programming annually. Four hours a day, 47 weeks. That's double the hours of comparable arts programming for any other arts program in the whole city. The Neighborhood Art House, where I also teach, only offers 365 hours of comparable programming. We are supported by the Housing Authority. They provide the facility, the base funding, maintenance, IT support for our program. We have culturally relevant staff. Many teaching artists and staff have lived in public housing at some point in their life and are connected to the John Haran community. Our program offers high-quality arts education. Our goals for our children and our youth are academic performance. We are improving grades, test score, school attendance, and we're reducing school suspension rates. We're building 21st Century skills, their creativity, their leadership, their empathy, their collaboration skills. Youth participate in an annual theater production, which is coming up May 15th. You're welcome to come. It's at Dafmark's Theater. And our annual youth art show is in a professional gallery space at City Gallery, where the kids actually earn money for their work. 50% of the proceeds goes to the children who make the work. We paid $815 to the kids this past year for their work. We have ongoing tracking of our program. So Penn State Core is our third-party evaluator who's tracking all of our outcomes. Why is this good for Erie? It provides safe, consistent, enriching environments for youth during critical out-of-school time hours. It generates strong economic return on investment. For every dollar that you spend in a high-quality out-of-school time program, it yields a $6.69 societal benefit. It supports the local economy by providing five jobs at our site in addition to the 30 community-based teaching artists who are employed and we source our materials locally. We leverage broad community support from Mercyhurst, the EMTA, local businesses and nonprofits. And we are aligned with Erie's goals of educational equity, youth development and poverty reduction. Why community development block grant funds are needed for our program? It's because we are trying to grow key staff positions by supporting the day-to-day staff positions of the site coordinator and our group leader positions. These roles are instrumental in the day-to-day functioning of the program and retaining quality staff in this field is a challenge. Community development block grants, funds would enable Dafmark to improve the rates of pay for these staff to provide more livable wages, which would both improve the economy and improve the ability to retain quality staff at Dafmark, which positively impacts the outcomes for the youth. This also ensures continued access to high-quality, life-changing program for Erie's most vulnerable youth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Jennifer, I'd like to meet with you before you leave today, okay? Just for a couple of minutes.
Good morning. How are you doing? Chantel Hill, your Booker T. Washington Center. First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor, Deb, Dave, Veronica, for all of the support you have given, not only Booker T. Washington Center over the years, but also JFK, Urban Erie, MLK and any other organizations that you have supported. It's truly important that, you know, you continue to do what you do. So I wanted to start off by saying thank you for that support over the years. And definitely has changed the trajectory of some of our youth today and hopefully we can continue to do this. So one of the things that I really wanted to focus on, and it goes back to what Karen kind of said, is not just the after-school programs, but summer programs as well. We all know the summer program is coming here pretty quickly. And over the years, that's been a very focal point when we have a lot of students that are out in the community during those specific times with not a whole lot to do. So your funding really helps support those individuals during the school time when school's not in. And so one of the things that we do, and I'm sure all of the other centers do, is we still try to continue to give an educational component because that summer slide obviously is real. And so, you know, our focus is between nine and 12, we focus on the educational piece with the literacy lab and the math lab and the reading lab as well. So we want to make sure that students are still getting the educational component. Although, when they come there, they really don't want to be bothered with it. But after, you know, a week or so, they get into the groove and they understand the importance of it. And as we move forward in the day, you know, we feed them a hot meal, you know, so to make sure that these individuals are eating. And then also, that wonderful timeframe is filled with lots of fun, recreational things, arts and crafts, field trips. So your funding really does do a great job of keeping students off the streets during the day and giving them the opportunity to come fellowship with some other individuals within their age bracket. And so I know if you could do more, you probably would do more. We understand the crunches that you all are in, but we want to make sure that we come and tell you thank you first and foremost, but also the importance of what your dollar is doing for these students. So without that, it will be more difficult for, just not our neighborhoods, but for this city, to contain all of these young men and women that are out on the streets during those particular times. So once again, thank you for the opportunity. We really appreciate your support and God bless. Thank you.
Edison Nicholson with the Youth Leadership Institute of Erie. First of all, I just want to begin by saying thank you for your consideration, for proposing that we receive some of the funding. I, when we first initiated the Youth Leadership Institute of Erie, our idea or our goal was to connect young people to the existing services here in Erie, Pennsylvania. Erie is very fortunate to be blessed with a number of different services for our young people. And what I would, what I would like to see is we carry out the model that we started with, with the Youth Leadership Institute of Erie. And as I said, is to connect young people to the existing services. The five that we started out, which we call Connected in Five, is leadership development training, service learning, a caring adult. Fourth is assistance with post-secondary education. And the fifth one is workforce development. If we can develop some type of system in that, in that grid and it follows, I was looking at the last page of this pamphlet here that you guys passed out. If we can list those, and I'm just highlighting a start, if we can list those, like how many young people are actually being helped in leadership development? How many young people are being involved in service learning? How many people are being connected or mentored? How many young people are being pushed towards higher education? How many young people are in workforce development? And list those individuals and then put a number, say, we served 5,000, 50,000 young people, boom, boom, boom. And it goes into these different categories or these different areas, something like that, just to show the significance that we are serious about the business of working with our young people here in Erie, Pennsylvania. Thank you.
Good morning. Jenny Hagerty from the Mercy Center for Women. First and foremost, thank you for the opportunity to present today. Mercy Center for Women has been housing women in Mercy Center for Women has been housing women and children, and now men, for over 31 years in our community, individuals who are homeless and who have faced domestic violence and who are in addiction recovery. So my voice and the voices of the individuals who I am fortunate to work with are the voices of the homeless, and this is a huge concern for our community, and it has been a huge concern. And my hope is that we can see government, city, and county, working together to solve the issue. Individuals who are at times making decisions whether funding can be allocated or not to nonprofits, to emergency shelters, transitional living, permanent housing, permanent supportive housing, are not boots on the ground. And oftentimes, when we complete surveys, we are completing surveys because we are passionate about the work that we do. However, we want these individuals to be able to visit us and see how our services at the Mercy Center continue to expand. We just purchased another facility on our property that will house another 10 to 12 individuals, females in our community. And it's alarming to know that 378 individuals during the single point in time were homeless, and we have 76 who are unsheltered. I have a waitlist at the Mercy Center for Women. We have 85 individuals trying to get into our program, and another 20 individuals who are trying to get into our anchor community. Again, we continue to work in silos, and I think money would be better spent if individuals could be brought to the table who have been doing this work for many years and work together collaboratively. We tend to work on our own, and we have a program out there called Infinite Erie. I'd love to know how the city and the county continue to work with Infinite Erie and what the goals are, so that all these wonderful people with, you know, after-school programs and art can benefit the work that we do at the Mercy Center. So again, I do appreciate your time and allowing me to speak, and we continue to try to move ahead and respect, I respect your time today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Let me say good morning. Bishop Frank Quinn of the Community Cornerstone Project, and we want to say that we thank the staff here for allowing us to come here today to present and to thank you for the funding that we've received. This is the third year for the Community Cornerstone Project to do incubator programs, run incubator cohort in Erie County to those that want to open a business or those that need help to sustain their, their business and to, to grow in an economic kind of way for those that are receiving low-income funding. So we appreciate what's, what's going on, and our goals have been, one, to work with the individuals as they achieve what they need to get out of the program. And what I really want to focus on is the support that we've received from the CDBG program, Deborah, and Dave, and Veronica, Mayor, they have done an excellent job in helping us to sustain the goals that we want to achieve and to give positive input on changes that we need to make so that we can be sustainable. And we certainly, our team certainly appreciates that as we move forward, because as we know, there's a, a lot of individuals that, that have a lot of dreams and aspirations to want to grow or start a business, but you know, there's some hard work that needs to go into that. And part of what the Community Cornerstone Project does is to help bring in Erie County resources that are already established to those who may not know what's available to them, and we help them to navigate that as we offer our cohorts and various programs. And then also with that, in our building, we also offer office space and space for those to, when they do get an idea and they want to work on their program, specifically, I'm thinking of Max Hats. He frequently has, comes into our building and, and has hat shows, you know, so, because he's unable to get a brick and mortar right now, but this helps to sustain him. He has gone through the program and has graduated from the program, but you know, we continue to support our graduates as they try to sustain their businesses. So we certainly appreciate the help and the funding that, that is provided.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. Mayor, and your staff. I want to thank you for your recommendation to continue to support the work we do, particularly the work that we do with new Americans.
Of course, say your name and where you're from.
I'm Gary Horton, and I'm from the Urban Erie Community Development Corporation. And again, I want to thank Deb, and Renee, and Veronica, and Dave for your patience with us. It's not always an easy, smooth process of doing everything that is required in the program, and we do appreciate that. I would also encourage council to support your recommendation, to assist us. And I have one concern in this is that, is there a possibility that federal action could throw all of this into a tailspin? Whereas we may not, even though you're recommending and council may approve, is there a possibility that the federal government will cut this program or cut these funds? And if that is a possibility, what else should we be doing, or can we be doing in the process of strengthening the opportunity that changes won't be made at the federal level like they've been made in other areas? I also want to, I believe the investment that we make in youth will help us change the trajectory of the city as we change the trajectory of the youth. We have many youth challenges, and there's not enough money or resources or attention invested in addressing that. We've been able to leverage the support that you give us to, to increase that. I would say that we have a housing problem that I would encourage us to find more ways to leverage private and other public funding. I know there's a lot of attention focused on homeless, and we do have a homeless problem, but I, I see a greater problem in housing with people who work every day, who cannot afford to buy a house or to bring their home up to a quality living standard that meets our, our codes. Some of these people are paying rents $1,500, $2,000 a month, and they can almost afford to buy two houses. They'll be homeowners twice with that. So there's something wrong in the system somewhere that will allow them to pay $1,500 and $2,000 a month to a landlord, but not be able to afford or to participate in programs that will allow them to own a home themselves or to leverage the resources that will allow them to bring their home up to code. Again, I want to thank you for all that you do, and certainly, we at the Quality of Life Learning Center appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it. I think we've heard from everybody except, okay, good. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you very much for what you do every day. I am Kathy Schoff, and I am the liaison for our community centers in Erie. I attend Neighborhood Watch meetings at them and have been involved with our community centers, and I am here to say I support each and every person that got up here to speak. I myself have a history of taking in young women years past who have had homing, home insecurities, and they have lived with us for a year or so until they're back on their feet. Have done that in the past. As an educator, 41 years with children plus, and have been involved with after-school programs and art, I totally affirm everything. And as my last seven years, when I first got on council in 2018, I have become friendly with some of the homeless in our city, and some have passed away since then, but there have been success stories as well that, since that time, seven years ago, a few of them I know have jobs now and are in rental situations where they're able to afford. But it's tough, and my own personal experiences with them and the places I've been have really, they have taught me a lot that I just can't say enough. And I have been to the Mercy Center for Women, and I have been to the centers, and I know the people who have spoke, and they're all good people who need our help, so I just wanted to say, we just have to keep on fighting and do what we have to do, and we're better together. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Really appreciate it.
Before we close out, if you didn't sign in, if you could please sign in over at that little desk, we appreciate it. We'll have Bill, I don't know if you...
Thank you, yes. No, I don't, I don't have any, I just want to thank everyone for coming out. It's really important that you provide comments to us, and we really appreciate taking time out of your day. Thank you.
And these were really great presentations you all gave. I was very impressed with all of them. We want to help all of you, and we'll do all we can to do that as well. So thanks very much for being here. Anybody have anything else?
Just want to, just make sure you know that these are proposed numbers. We do not have our funding allocation, so these numbers are subject to change. Thank you all for coming. There is another public hearing today at 6 o'clock if any of you want to come back again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.